Just a couple reminders, just a couple things. Please wear your mask while you're here. And there are children here. And we're all here. And we'll go over the rules of the public input when that's time. But I was told that the we don't have a buzzer tonight, so we're just gonna have a time. So we'll just try to take it to the time. Okay. You don't all have our masks on, so all we pick it. You have a mask?
Nope.
You need to have a mask.
Mandate and
pardon me?
The mandate and it's not a requirement, it's a violation of the nerve I will not wear. I'm here to speak. If you'd like, I can tell you what I need to be spoken about before it starts. Can we throw the bubble and pin you right off with that?
No.
Because I've yet to get an answer from you guys, this is the third time I've been here. So now
We need to have a mask, but just for everybody's safety. I haven't heard that that's
I've got a six feet of a mask, not breathing on, I ain't touching nobody.
Okay, well, we'll wait a little while.
You gonna answer my questions then?
No, I'm waiting, waiting for
If I put a mask, if I get a mask, are you gonna answer my questions?
We're not here to answer questions tonight.
I thought this was part of the
You give us input and we'll
Yeah, this is
we'll get back to you. But this is, this is out of, this is out of order now, so I'm not gonna continue. All right, we'll take a 10 minute recess and then we'll end the meeting. 10 minutes. Still need to have masks.
It's not a law, it's a request. Wearing a mask, it's not a law. The mandate is nothing more than a request from someone, and the mandate was dropped. It was one month old, and it was done through the University Department of Health for the government. I know.
Actually, the VA years does have an important requirement. There is no, you're clearly wearing it off your nose, correct?
So
So
So So you don't need what?
You have to have an important requirement. With an important requirement, you have to have
You do
study.
Yes, you Because it doesn't violate the nerve What are you talking about? You don't know the nerve request, you know
You're
you're you're you're
You
or you 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 ask for the things you No, you
You're 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 right now.
If you wanted to wear the right mask.
You have holes in it? You have holes, you have that? Why? My mask is on the same one you have it.
All right. Excuse me. But we have to proceed with our meeting.
We're going to executive.
We will have a motion to go in executive session. Second. We're gonna be going in executive session. Just so you know, if we can't resolve this, we'll, we'll have to return. So if you're waiting to speak, you'll have to return and come back another time. All right, we're having the meeting back in session. Let's see masks, thank you, everybody. Wear them over your nose. Please. All right. Have a motion to approve the minutes. So I'm over here.
Well, our
for our Okay, let's see it. All right, and we'll move on to presentation. So we have Mrs. Schultz. That's Essex here. Part of the conversation along with Sire.
Miss Sire.
Yep.
We're here on being this effort and your show, and I know Jim Karen will be talking to a the students will be where we have going on at the school this year and the things that have come and what's Jim Karen, you wanna talk about the elementary?
Yeah, so as we mentioned, sorry, as we mentioned in September, maybe it was that overboard meeting. We had done a climate survey for all of our grades one through four students. We analyzed the results, I believe you received a copy of those. We put out the various anti-bullying surveys where kids can use a QR code and report that they feel that they have been bullied. We are, just to piggyback on what we did with the climate survey, this December, we just are implementing the climate survey for our kindergarteners because they were a little a little too small for the climate survey in September.
So our counselors did one-on-one meetings with all of our kindergarteners to do that survey. Some other things that we've done in October as well as one in January that we have upcoming is we had an anti-bullying assembly for our Unity Day, Stand Up, Stand, Step In and Stop Bullying. We've done faculty meetings where we had our two days responsive classroom, which is a continuation of the two days that we had in June, so that was a four day PD, we did zones of regulations and the teachers are doing daily check-ins with the kids as they come in. And then in January, we, we had to reschedule because can't remember if it was a snow day or something happened, we couldn't have the puppets in education, so CE is gonna have first and then EJA is gonna have it in the future.
And then we just opened up a satellite office for Green County Mental Health. And they'll be in the building one day a week. And they're starting to get different families and students that'll be coming in and meeting with them weekly. So we're really excited to be able to have that partnership.
Where is that office located?
It's right down next to the nurses' office.
At EJA.
Yeah.
It's on EJA.
I'm Sharon Schultz, I'm the grade five and six counselor. Thank you for inviting us to speak and hearing more about the social emotional programming that we're doing. Like the elementary school, we also administer the climate survey. We had our first administration in the fall. And I know Dr. Mercer had shared the data earlier with you. But we definitely sat down with the, the teaching staff, the administration and the counseling staff and tried to sort of analyze the data and then come up with a game plan on what we could do better at the school. We continued our training, fifth and sixth grade teachers had responsive classroom training. Seventh and eighth grade teams have restorative practice. And together as a five through eight community, we've been really working with a, to develop a culture of care mentality, you know, being led by Miss Sire and Dr. Mercer to really try to help our students interact better with themselves, but also to build our relationship between staff and students. I gave you a summary of my role and my work in the middle school, and I'm certainly not gonna read it bullet by bullet because you'd be here all night long. I definitely take my, my piece of helping support the students' social emotional learning very seriously. I think it's the most important thing I do throughout the day. I'm gonna highlight just a few of the bullets that I'm proud of or especially proud of. First, I really strive to be visible to the students. I'm in the lobby in the morning, I push into classes, I help kids with their homework. I really try to know, I think I know most of them by name at this point. Sometimes with the hat and the mask, it's a little challenging. But common by name, trying to connect to each person, so when they do have an issue, when they do have something they need to talk about, they at least feel comfortable to know who I am. I've also created Google classrooms for counseling, and that has a lot of social emotional resources. Again, I pushed in and explained and showed my classroom to the kids, they'll have access to it. And in there, I also have a link where they can request to see me. And they, they are requesting to see me, which is great, if they're comfortable asking. The third thing we expanded this year was the zones of regulation. We did a trial with one class last year where zones of regulation is the students identify how they're feeling and they match it up with four colors. Sort of like a traffic light, the red, green and yellow, and then blue for feelings sad or depressed. And our goal is to get everyone in the green, so you are ready to learn. And so, working with the students so they are identifying their emotions, connecting it, and then knowing what to do to get themselves to get back to that green, ready to learn color. So the fifth and sixth grade teachers do a zone check with students every day. And at the bottom of that zone check is also like to see me if they're feeling like, you know, I'm really sad or I'm really angry and I need some time outside of the classroom to get ready to learn.
Hi, I'm Dawn Essex, the counselor for grade seven and eight. I like to think of my role as a blending with helping kids to improve academically. Also, I'm trying to get them ready for high school. So I will be starting annual reviews very soon with the eighth graders where we develop a full four-year high school program. So I take that role very serious and that takes a long time, but it's a great way to really get to know those students. And also, we want to support students emotionally and socially. Everyone, wherever we can. Students can request to see me at any time. The seventh and eighth graders tend to email me more than use the request to see counselor form. Also, my seventh and eighth grade teams, the teachers and the staff are great at telling me, I think the student's really upset. Could you please check on them? And then also during team meetings, they might tell me that these students, their grades are dipping a little bit, you know, let's check in on them. So, so that's kind of how I, you know, balance my day is, you know, helping with the academic improvement and also checking in when my students might be a little upset about something. As far as something I'm really proud of, I started doing restorative justice circles on a regular basis this year. I've had three active groups going since September and I just started my fourth group. And I'm gonna talk about the mentoring program in a minute. Thank you. One of the highlights of our fall was Unity Day. And the school district has been celebrating Unity Day as a day to unite against bullying for about 10 years. We sort of, based on the survey results, definitely wanted to increase our presence and turn it into sort of a week-long event this fall. So instead of just having, we did have one day where we all were orange and we all were celebrating that we were uniting together. In grade five and six, I pushed and did presentations and we had a class discussion about bullying. In grade seven and eight, Dawn and her intern Kayla met with kids during recess time and to again, to further that discussion about bullying and how can we help as a school community to make our school better. One of the highlights that I liked of Unity Day was each student had, you can sort of, we all each student and faculty member could take an orange piece of paper and following our discussion and during the recess discussions, write down what they could do individually to make our school a better place. We then united all of those different ideas together into a five through eight unity chain that stretched about halfway down the hallway.
That's
So it was a great sort of symbol of us coming together to try to make our school a better place. Okay, so I'm rolling out the STAR program, which it stands for Student Tutoring and Role Modeling Program. So many of you probably know I used to be a high school counselor. And I know that there's a lot of high school students that are looking for more volunteer opportunities. And they're also very good role models for younger students. And we've always had a handful of high schoolers that would tutor a few of the middle school students, but I wanted to make it more organized. And I didn't want it to be just the honor society students. So I'm opening this up to any high school student that wants to participate. It might be that they will tutor one-on-one a middle, middle school student. Maybe they're gonna help out at recess, run some games, maybe they'll help out at a, you know, for a club. Or maybe they're gonna push in with some of the teachers and help out during office hours. So I really want to tap into that talent that we have with those high school students. It'll look tremendous on your resume. I'm gonna have them use the passport for good to longer hours. So I'm really excited about this and I really, I sent it out very late to students on, I guess it was Friday, and then some of them may not have seen it until Tuesday, but I already had 10 students signed up. So we'll be starting to match these students. I also sent out a survey to the middle school staff to say, do you want a student to push into your classroom? Do you have certain specific students that might benefit from having a tutor? Do you want a student to help you with a club? So I'm also trying to fit in with the needs of the, the teachers and the staff. So, thank you.
I wanted to highlight some of our school club this month with the social and emotional wellbeing and our students. The club that brings students together and helps them interact in those relationships with the staff that runs the club and the students within. Besides there are athletes, we also have a fitness club. And this one is very engaging for students in middle school. They have been doing tournaments, basketball tournaments in March, we're planning to do March Madness, so bring all the middle schoolers together and they could have fun with this club. In the high school, I wanted to highlight the gaming club where students come and they use the high school library to game. It's developing into esports. And the small group of students, there's not as much participants as prior to the pandemic, but we're still seeing an increase in that. We also have, the interact club members are here, the president and vice president, Trevor here, that they're all talking about the interact club and what they do, bring the community and each other together. So upcoming things that we have to support the social emotional wellbeing of our students, we have a challenge with the American Heart Association and Kid Heart Challenge where PE teachers are taking will be the doing lessons within their PE classes, it's gonna be K-12. There's social emotional lessons within coping strategies. And building relationships are within that curriculum. In the five eighths grades, we are starting to implement FDL monthly lessons. That's gonna be led by myself, our counselors, Dr. Fannin and some site interns pulling our two county counselors and hopefully Green County Mental Health that will be going in to those classrooms once a month. And we pinpointed February, self-management and goal setting. March, coping and stress. April, responsible decision-making, May, relationships building, and June, self-protection. This would be for all students, five, eight, and we'll be pushing them to the classroom and doing direct instructions with those skills in mind. In the next couple months, we're gonna have a cyber safety presentation through the National Center for Visiting and Exploited Children. This has been done in Greenville several years ago, and there was an interest in helping our students be more mindful of social media and the use, and we also want to share that to parents to be a part of the presentation after school. Just to help navigate all the new social media that's going on with TikTok and Snapchat and all the features and have it protect our students and help them be more mindful of how we use social media.
So who's presenting that?
We're working with the National Center for Visiting and Exploited Children, I reached out to a contact and he's given back to me of like, who can help come to the school. And there is a budget for it, I was told. So I just made a call and we're looking on getting that to the end of February to bring that back. Working between counties to do coping groups. With that, we're looking at it's in the beginning process of trying to see what area needed. We're looking at how to bring in just positive coping strategies instead of going to drugs or vaping, other positive things to help with anxiety and fear pressure. We're looking at doing that to between counties. Having parents recommend their children if they would like to be a part of it, and we're just seeing if it's gonna be an after-school club or if it's something that we can work on during the school day. In fact, and then we're here to answer any questions, if you have questions for us.
I guess one question, I mean, you guys are doing so many different programs and things, initiatives that you're getting started with. What can we as a ward do, you know, and not put you on a spotlight right now and come up with a list. But thinking like, as you're, you're making your budgets, as you're planning your years of things, is there support for programs budgetarily or training or, you know, your, your wish list, I guess? To make sure that we can, we can do our part to continue to support this.
The counselors, we, we met with Mr. Squire about like a week and a half or so ago. And one of the things that we, I know we expressed was the need for a social, social worker, someone to really work and build those community relationships, help parents with insurance applications or how to apply for DSS. It's not, I mean, I certainly learned a lot in the 12 years I've worked here. It's not my area of strength and it takes a lot of time. I was trying to help a parent. The application for DSS is like 35 pages. I'm like, okay. And I think I got a community contact that is willing to help her, but that would be an area that I would see as being really helpful. I would agree with that, but also our Green County counselors are back to waitlist of the students. They are completely booked. So if we had an in-house social worker, they could take some of those cases of students that need a little bit more than like every other week counseling session, they could see them more regularly.
Maybe you could give us more information on the waitlist, like, not now, but
Well, I know, I just, I was at a meeting with Green County Mental Health last week. And I know they just lost a clinician, so to get an intake at Green County Mental Health, either with an in-school person or a person at the center, there's at least a month's wait right now for an intake. And then, again, you have got to get set up, they're, they're doing remote sessions and they're doing in-person sessions. And right now, again, our, our in-school people are full. So sometimes they will discharge a patient or a patient will decide to discontinue. But if they you know, sometimes we are sort of doing that gap counseling and probably something that's a little get, yeah, I'm not a mental health counselor. I certainly want to talk to, to help kids, but it would be better served by mental health counselor. I also had a student that was seeing a Green County Mental Health counselor, but the parents' insurance changed. And I guess Green County didn't take that insurance. So that's a perfect case with, if we had a social worker in-house, they could start seeing that student. So I've been trying to fill a gap, you know, I still check in with that student. Try to offer as much support as I can.
I, I just want to make a comment, I like the fact that, you know, obviously there's a huge need, but using the tools that we have, you know, like using high school students and building different relationships, you know, because even though they might not be the most extreme cases, but it's probably very helpful just in general for just everybody's well-being. Nice, nice job. Thank you.
It's good you're using your survey to develop your plans too.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good, so you could get, almost 20% of kids said they didn't feel like they had somebody to go to, so you're mentoring and, you know, what your outreach is gonna
Yeah, and that has been a focus of school staff
Yeah.
this fall. And we're gonna read the beginning of February, we're gonna do the survey again. And I really do think between our efforts and again, our great new leadership in the middle school, that we're gonna see some positive change in those numbers.
Not to ask you to come back at night again, but we would, I think, like to see how see the difference that you, that you see if you just send them along
Absolutely.
to Mr. Squire, or you're certainly welcome to come. Because I think we're all appreciative.
I can also make that part of my update.
Okay.
I will update.
Perfect.
I'm out of the middle school, high school. And elementary principals get to do updates, I could do
That's good.
have the
And the cybersecurity piece too. I think we'd be interested in keeping track of that because there's social media is mixed blessing. That'd be great.
I just want to say too, we tap into every resource. I mean, if I know a student has a great connection with a coach, I go to that coach and I say, hey, the student needs a pep talk, you know, we do things like that all the time. And we have teachers that are almost, I don't like counseling kids, like, just because they care and, and the students go to them for extra support. So we do work as a team. You know, I think we got a lot of caring people in the middle school.
Very good. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some students here in the interact club. Would you like to share with us?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Mayisha, I'm a senior. I'm also the president of Interact Club. And I'm, I can, I'm the vice president. And we're here to speak on behalf of Interact Club.
Yeah. So Mayisha and I have been active members of the Interact Club for the last four years. We've experienced what is, I like to be engaged members and enthusiastic leaders. Our club holds some strong core values, we place a high importance on service and always look for ways to get back to others. A tradition in our club that predates our membership is our own Adopt a Family program. Each year, we collect donations for several families in order to fulfill their Christmas wish lists. Most of the students have never had gifts to open on Christmas. Some can't even imagine what to ask for and some can't want what they have, they need. Our club reaches out and extends a hand to those who need a little extra help. We song for elderly at Bethany Village, we've had holiday meals with them. We help unload and organize food at Food Pantry. We volunteered at Blood Drive. And worked, we worked to spread some joy during COVID last year. And every year, we donate to outside international organizations as well.
With Adopt a Family being our largest program, we have spent countless hours as a club preparing and fundraising to ensure that every student has a memorable holiday experience. Regardless of circumstances. Within the past four years, we have raised $6,783 for our program and have helped over 90 families within our district. And we have also helped families through COVID hardships. And we have covered the tough costs for prom tickets as well as created a care closet for students to have access to clothes, supplies and also toiletries. We also extend our help internationally by donating to international projects. On average, we usually donate around $500. And recently, we've been able to donate to a care organization to help for COVID-19 relief. And we also have donated to wildlife preservation to help endangered species. Megan and I are obviously very passionate about the club. We Um, Megan and I are obviously very passionate about the club. Um, we have seen firsthand how impactful it is to our community and we couldn't be more proud of it. Um, we hope for, you know, Interact Club to spread inspiration and make a difference in Cuxocky Athens for possibly future generations. So, thank you for your time and have a lovely evening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's take the unit to Squire for volunteers.
Just a follow-up from, from previous meeting, we put up volunteers for coaches and I shared our guidelines for that. They have to be CPR first aid certified. We also, when it comes to coaches, we'd like, we, there have to be like a year out of high school. Sometimes why just, just to avoid any, because mostly coaching is dealing with high school kids from middle schools. We just want a little bit wider gap. We do sometimes have folks come into our elementary schools and volunteer, you know, right out of high school for coaching, might have one year gap. So, again, the applicant needs to make the recommendation. Have to consult with the coaches and things like that. But like any volunteer, our schools is not to be unsupervised by employees. And that goes same for coaches as well. They should never be left alone or put in a position where they are the coach. Others on the field or on a bus, we do not allow volunteers to ride home in the bus, but the coach drives home. That's supposed to. Understands that?
Committee reports?
Yep, yep.
Want me to do it? We got the innovation committee and Mr. Wallace. Couldn't be with us tonight, but we've talked about a facilitator and Mr. Squire has identified someone and shared his resume with us and, uh, and also set up some dates. So now we have to get a letter together to get, go out to folks who, who might be interested in, uh, joining this task force to look at several different issues around the declining enrollment and resource management. And anything else?
I'll, I'll share the draft letter with the board. By Monday.
Okay.
Might go tomorrow. I'll give myself to Mondays.
Updates?
But the first topic, uh, you know, this doesn't happen until it happens. You know, we have snow days and they, they happen on occasion here in North State, New York. Um, there's always a question, can we have practice or not have practice on those days? And it's kind of banter around about that. I know Ryan and I were talking about the most recent one there because as you know, sometimes it's that it's all gone by ten AM, you know, the roads are clear and dry. Uh, so can we have practice, like, you know, what we, what would have been after school or not? We have contests uh after school or not. So I just, uh, there's no policy on this. There's no, you know, nothing, you know, I'd say it needs to be. So I, I'm asked what the board's thoughts are on that. Uh, if they have an opinion on it, they just want to leave it to us to make, just like we make a decision whether we're at school or not, right? Or delay or not, you want us to just continue to do that? For the board, do they have any thoughts or opinions on that?
I had one question, I guess. Um, how many of the students that play sports rely on the bus in the morning to get them to school for them to be there for practice and for matches? That was my concern, like if there's no school, it cancels, the parents still have to go to work. Are these kids now missing out on what, you know, because they have to watch their siblings or they're just don't have a ride now because the bus isn't there?
I don't have a number. I mean, you know, it certainly varies. I think one thing we would say is we wouldn't, there wouldn't be any morning practices. We would, it'd still be two thirty practice or three o'clock.
But a lot of parents work though.
Right, 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 yeah. So that, and that's, that's a question. So I know, like, we might just say, you know, modified. It's mostly kind of a varsity question. You know, the ones, you know, like for example, this, the last snow day, we had games scheduled. So the question of whether we should be playing or not, you know, because, um, you know, one of the schools we were playing happened that, that they were on remote, so it wasn't an issue with that because they had to close that day because they ran a remote instruction already. So they were willing to play. Uh, when we moved the games to Saturday, you know. At least not for us. So in that regard, but yeah, I, I agree that, you know, certainly nobody should be punished.
Yeah, I just don't want a kid to be like upset because now their team that they would have been part of that game, now they're not a part of it because they're, they can't get there or
Right.
they have other obligations now that they have to, that might be detrimental to some of our athletes.
Think of the past, sometimes what's happened is the coach will, can you, can you be like, let's go for games, can you make it, you know, you can kind of do a a survey of the kids, can you make, you know, I can kind of, I'm just trying to get what's caught on the past and hopefully go see how many players could, could make it to a game that night for incidents made by the team. Usually they can't all be there, but those pose problems.
I mean, practice is practice. If you hold the practice, I mean, if a kid can't make it, you, you wouldn't hold it against him, but for a game, if the, if you could just send out a email or a text to me and I think that's great if you can, if you have enough kids that can get here.
How do the coaches feel about it? I mean, are they into it or is it going to be up to them to decide whether they want to have practice or not, you know, whether they live pretty close or whether they have to drive a little bit?
Well, the first is that we decide whether we can even entertain the option, you know, but again, that's, you know, the weather, it's, you know, it's a good, what's it going to be like at three o'clock in the afternoon? It's a little bit yucky out. We're just going to shut down so it's be or in the morning, but like, like I said, the best example is the one we just had, that snow day, I think we all agreed by ten o'clock. It's not bad, you know, the roads are clear and such and all that. I don't have a lot of questions to be answered. So it'd be the first decision would be, is it an option? You entertain the idea of having contests or practices that evening or after school and then from there generally the coaches are the, the ones kind of deciding, you know, based on, I think, they, they call or call or email their kids, text their kids, see what, what the field is.
So right now, schools play, there is no game or practice, is that?
Pretty much, the most, yeah. Unless it's sectional, so.
Right.
We don't really, we can't change sectional unless everybody's shut.
I mean, I, I could see that you'd be calling this, just like you would in the morning, you'd be calling at ten o'clock or, or noon if it were safe.
Right.
And then the coaches could check with their kids and see if they're able to come or not.
I think that's acceptable.
Good. Uh, just, just for information, this is policy, well, we have a policy book and I know uh, if there was on the policy, we'd be a great job of willing to download. Uh, but one, the next step though is, is our website version of it's kind of clunky at best, so uh, there's just a bunch of PDFs in there. And so that's something we're going to work on, work on Elizabeth, just to kind of add, uh, we have some different possibilities. Uh, so it's easier for everybody to access, so it's board or in public, you know, just make it cleaner and make sure they're all there. And, you know, in order, stuff like that. So this, this kind of an update, we'll be working on that here on the month or two.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. We're all, I go to the website.
I do.
I use the paper.
If you sent me a question about something on there, I'm like, oh.
We're going to get that. Uh, so on the, see the website, if you've been on there, maybe you know, we switched to a new company in the fall or whenever, uh, but we've had major disco changes to it. And, uh, so I just, you know, take a look, uh, some of them are good, like we've added a couple. If you go to the homepage, right, you go for the right of some of those. Mari's looking for the lunch menu, Mari's looking for the sports schedule, Mari's looking for the given e-school data as a parent, so they're up there. We can add a couple more. Uh, we're probably going to send out a one question survey of parents. If there's one, if you want to go to our website, let me click one button, what do you want that one button to go to, we kind of prioritize that one. We changed the, just the way that the website works. You don't have to hover anymore. It's not, for somebody who has like, you hover and it's gone and then you got to do what you can. So now it's a little bit more quick. In, in that regard, you're still kind of cleaning, making sure things are easy to find, uh, for people. So duly applicating this, we're going to do a lot of that work. Uh, COVID updates. That's up tonight, because as we know, tomorrow night, we're going to get our, our newest version of guidance. Uh, I put a letter at your desk there. Yeah, we've been kind of trying to perfect with the most recent guidance that came out this past week, the last week in New York State. Uh, the big change, we're going to have a five day quarantine isolation period. Most people are aware of that right now. Uh, and so, uh, even though the state is no longer doing contact tracing, uh, we're going to continue to do a modified version of that. We're still going to make sure that there wasn't any hugely, you know, kids who were, you know, sitting like this for all day with no mask on and, you know, all that kind of thing. So, um, so those parents are continued to be notified. We're, we're already doing the elementary classrooms, if there's a case in the elementary classroom. Martina, Mrs. Miller, Susan Ada, just to, just to, just so you know, even though you don't have to quarantine, if somebody in the, in the room uh had tested positive, that'll continue as well. So it really wasn't ending contact tracing for schools. Just got to push it down. You know, just so, uh, so parents should not expect a phone call from the state anymore if their kid is tested positive or they're quarantined. But three will get a call from the city or, or somebody at the school, uh, if that's occurred. In the letter, of course, we can't see the links on the page, but there's links to all the, um, documents from the state in that regard. So masks are still mandated, there's no change of masking and such, so. Be aware of that. And again, you know, we meet twice a week as superintendents in the region to try to figure it all out. We meet once a week with Green County Public Health, uh, to make sure we're following their, um, expectations and such. And they're going to help us out on the backside a little bit still with, with positive and things like that, notifying us if they find out what we do and vice versa. They're, they're still helping out. There are some counties that completely, so we're done, we're not doing anything anymore. With it. So the contact tracing, so, so we should be fortunate in that regard. Any questions on COVID? And we are trying, I'm sorry, we are trying to, uh, host another vaccine clinic here. So we're on, we're just waiting to see if the state will come out and do it here early. That would be for any first, second, third shots for kids and adults. Uh, twenty-two twenty-two calendar, uh, nothing yet. Uh, usually we try to get something out, at least start looking at. Uh, but, but state has not announced what the rating day is for next June. And it's one of those years where is it going to be the June twenty-third? Are they going to go into the next week? You know, it's one, three now and then they do that. Uh, if it's June twenty-third, that makes things extremely tight uh for everybody, because it's one of those years where twenty-third is the earliest days that the rating day is, you know? And also, uh, September, not the late, early it is, but still early, I guess. So you can just, so it's a short, you can tell right now, it's going to be a short Christmas vacation again next year, even shorter than this year because Christmas is on Sunday. So it's only just one week, two weekends a week. Uh, so we got to have to be creative with February as well. You know, the kids should have it off. We might have to do some contact plays or something on February week instead, uh, for next year, so. Let's, like I said, wait down the reading day, so we can work ourselves batteries, so. Even a few years, there won't be reading day, there won't be reading exams. That's my updates.
Question updates? Doctor Wu.
Um, I want to start out with a shout out to Jim and our two pre-K teachers and our two teaching assistants, because they've been working triple overtime to get everything ready. Our pre-K classrooms, our two classrooms are going to start on Monday. Uh, they're going to do a staggered start, so half the kids will come in on Monday. The other half of the kids will come in on Tuesday and then Wednesday we'll have all the, all the kids in. They've been completing screenings for the incoming pre-K students to give them an opportunity to meet their teacher, get to know the building a little bit, so it's not quite as dramatic when they start in on that first day. Um, and that has gone quite well. Um, right now, in terms of our class sizes, so we have nineteen students that are coming from Cuxocky Athens. We have thirteen students who are coming from EJ Arthur. So that's making right now a class of eighteen and a class of, um, of thirteen, no fourteen, sorry. And then we're waiting two different packets to come in and be finalized to be put in. The students, yes, that I already did the halfway starting on Monday and the half on starting on Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. You said a number of eighteen from Cuxocky Athens and
Yes, that's the breakdown.
and fourteen from EJA. I don't understand that.
So in terms of the, of the students that have registered, so right now overall, we have thirty-two packets and we still have a couple of kids that we're waiting on and we still have a little bit of room that we put in. Of those students, thirteen of those students are from the Edward J. Arthur, um, student zone and nineteen of the students are from Cuxocky Elementary. That was not intentional by anyone. It's just, I just thought I'd give the breakdown of where the students are coming from.
Yeah, you missed, you misspoke. You didn't say Cuxocky Elementary, you said Cuxocky Athens.
Oh, okay. Sorry, that's, that's, it's been a long day, I'm sure. Sorry. So yes, there are in Cuxocky Athens as a whole, we have thirty-two students. I'm just awaiting two packets, because we still have room if anybody has interest in having their students take pre-K. In terms of just letting you know who's coming from the Cuxocky zone and the Edward J. Arthur zone, it's thirteen from Edward J. Arthur and nineteen from Cuxocky.
But they'll be intermingled.
They'll be intermingled, yes.
The first day is Monday.
The first day is Monday and there's going to be no tears, right?
Mrs. Callen?
Absolutely right.
You'll have to tell us all about it.
They have been really working very hard, so we really appreciate all your hard work, friend. You've been working triple overtime, so it's going to be awesome.
Did you get your furniture?
Yeah.
I should say, actually, I should give a, thank you for saying that, Mr. Don Hugh. I should give a shout out to both Greenville and Carroll who loaned us furniture just in case our furniture didn't get in on time. So that was very nice of both those school districts. We appreciate it, but luckily everything came in on time. We're, we're good to go. We're set. We're ready. We just need the kids to roll in.
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Palmer?
Hello, business. So, um, we had a com, or a conversation with our EPC company, Ecosystems. They let us know that the energy performance contract is nearing its completion. They said about ninety-five percent done, with the remaining five percent is simply just programming on the systems that were installed. Um, and then it will take over our, reviewing our bills over the next, I think, three years there. Um, and reporting back to us on what savings and such. Um, the next thing I have for you guys is back when the, um, audit was presented to you, I think it was in the October meeting. Um, at that meeting, uh, ECA, Extra Classroom Activity Fund was scrutinized and we put together a corrective action plan by the November, um, board meeting. And we submitted it to the state and we got something back. They just asked us to put end, end dates or anticipation end dates on each of the findings and put them on there. I just needed your, you're going to see it later on in the business matters section. Just need your go ahead to, so that I can submit that back to them. They do need, uh, for, for that. Uh, we were able to, or we were given a phone call by Marilyn Rzitsky who asked if she could donate the sum of money that you see there on the, um, on the board minutes um, in the form of a scholarship. She is still currently working on the criteria for the scholarship. I had a very long conversation with her on the phone, super nice lady. Uh, the next thing, in August, we met in August thirteenth deadline to submit our application for the Emergency Connectivity Fund through the FCC. Um, we were approved for seven hundred forty-three thousand dollars of funding uh for emergency connectivity fund devices that includes iPads, MacBooks, ThinkPads, Chromebooks. Hotspots, I can call. Uh, so Nicole worked with myself and Leslie throughout that entire process. Um, and we were very happy to finally get a commitment letter, uh, from USAC for, for that seven hundred forty-three thousand dollars. So with that, we can go and hopefully jumpstart Nicole's, uh, replenishing plan for our devices, um, so that, you know, we're not looking to spend large sums of money on entire iPad um overhauls and single ears.
The next, you said, acronym for what? You said, who gave us this money?
FC, the FCC.
Oh, FCC.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
The Feds.
Yeah.
And that, so you worked on it and Nicole?
Yep, that was part of my internship and then Nicole and Leslie helped with it as well.
Thank you, thank you Nicole.
So, uh, the next thing is originally when we had met, um, after the last board meeting, uh, we had we had talked about possibly doing some law enforcement drills on our campuses. We had one organized with Green County and the, we were going to do it down to EJA. And it was a training for the Athens Police. With the recent spike in COVID coming out of the Christmas break, they did ask if we could postpone that. So we are looking to do that probably during the next elongated break we have. And then possibly a larger one at a larger scale with more to-dos in it, a larger agenda, a larger itinerary here in this campus. The final thing I have for you guys on there is the district credit cards. So as we all know, buying online has become a lot more popular than going to the store. It's become a lot more popular than, you know, sending POs or whatnot. So with that, supplies for teachers, general supply line items that, you know, all within our purchasing policy. We were constantly running into our credit card limit. And it's really delaying us getting the supplies that the teachers need. So we are suggesting that we, you know, to fall still in line with the existing per, our policy there with the credit cards. We do want to increase the limit of the cards from $7,000 to $10,000. The aggregate would be 10,000. There are two cards, each of them is the $5,000 maximum. And again, nothing needs to change with the purchasing policy. Just wanted to kind of let you guys know what we're hoping to do.
So our rose card shared?
Randy has one and I have one.
It's at my desk.
Same.
Just in case you need something.
Mine sits in safe.
Purchased online.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir.
Principles and Directors update. Is Katie with us? Katie Castle, are you on the air? Hi Katie.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. Can you hear?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I'll be brief. We, we finished, I talked about you, talked to you last time. We just finished our Orton Gillingham training. We had about 10 teachers complete a 40 hour training session. So over the next quarter, of the rest of the May or of the year, we're going to be working on implementing that training into their, you know, into their practice, their teaching practices. We have a few, about five teachers that want to go on for one training. And they are looking at, you know, what that entails is logging in 50 sessions over a period of eight months and working with an Orton Gillingham trainer and getting back as they work with students through the Orton Gillingham approach. So we have about five teachers that are interested in doing that, working on next steps for that. The department is also getting ready for annual reviews. We're planning the 22, 23 school year currently. It's hard to wrap our head around that as we're trying to finish out this school year, but we are planning ahead forward. So we've been working with teachers and getting recommendations with that and working with district office and, you know, making our, you know, what, what the special education services will look like for next year. And then last, our skills class did a, a holiday craft sale. It was, they made a bunch of ornaments and they were practicing, you know, their money skills and, and using change and earned $130 for the classroom for materials that they can use for their next project. And they're working on doing a spring project right now. So those are the special ed updates.
Very good. Thank you. Nicole?
Good evening, everybody. We are so excited. We are celebrating a new member of our team. Quinn O'Rourke has joined the team. He's cute as a button from the pictures that have been shared with us. And we were recording that mom, dad and the siblings are just thrilled to have him join us this week. So congratulations to Frank. Tyler and I, Tyler's joining us this, this evening as well as probably next month as well. So thank you, Tyler. We're attending a cybersecurity training tomorrow, which we're really interested in doing. We want to make sure we have a very safe environment. We are working with the electronic absence management system to bring on the staff that aren't currently on, which would be your cafeteria maintenance workers and your admin team. And Randy will be really excited to know that we ordered the ClearTouch panels, which are a new technology that we're bringing into our environment for our littles, which is our pre-K. They have been ordered. I'm looking for a delivery date. They haven't been able to provide that yet, but Randy's been awesome to test it out, find out if we like it. It is a fantastic piece of equipment. And I'm really looking forward to when we have a board meeting in the building, that you're able to actually come in and look at it and play with it. It's a lot of fun. And we've had a high level of participation with Technology PD when the teachers are offering the training. So we've really seen a spike in, in engagement with teachers in the monthly training. So we're excited to keep that going as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller?
All right. So at Cuxory Elementary, we've had, we had our seventh grader, well, not our Cuxory, our middle school seventh graders from Susan Tadler's class had come over and are working with our third graders. This is the second year that we're doing it. And there, there are seamstress for our persuasive writing of our monsters for sale, opinion pieces. So they've been working with our third graders and some of our second graders. They initially started with these roadworks class and there's an installation right up here in our case of some of the monsters that they created and also the sewing, the ones that they sewed, they get to set home. So that was just a snippet that's going on. We tried to do a lot of collaborative pieces, just like Dawn was saying, to get some of our middle school and high school kids to come over and work with our kids, not only on an educational project, but also to work with them, just to work with them and to be able to support the classroom teacher. Another thing that's going on is our fourth grader community service project. We're putting soup cans, so Anthony soup cans, we want to bring those in. We're putting those for local food pantry. And then our third and fourth grade teachers just recently had the simulation for the New York State tests. And we worked with tech department to have all the Chromebooks here as well as it was a 338 day that we all practiced with the Chromebooks and we'll keep, continue to do that in preparation for the New York State assessments. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So our kindergarten grade two teachers have been working together on developing some curriculum for studying the properties of matter. And so they met this past month to put all the curriculum and activities together. And then this, this past week, the, the kindergartners came in with the second graders. So Miss Weddies' class went with Miss Wilson, Miss Westfall went with Miss Felding. And they met in the cafeteria and they had to use their senses and their knowledge of the properties of matter to determine what was in these mystery bags. It was hysterical to see some of their responses. At the end, they are able to figure out what everything was. Some of them were, were correct and others were, were way off. But it was a really great collaborative and the kids really enjoyed it. They're going to do it again next month. I think the theme is going to be volcanoes, so that'll be pretty cool. And then just to keep up with the Millers here, the Cantab update. Ms. Passick is still leading the Cantab charge. So we're at 50 pounds and we're trying to get to 100 pounds of Cantabs. And as you know, the Cantabs are something that K-4 students collect. And then it's donated to the Ronald McDonald House in Albany.
Thank you. Middle School?
You know what, I'm going to feed like the whole kids and have my update on my phone. So you received our good news at the middle school. I think we've got a lot of, we had a lot of, we had a lot of fun things happening in December and then into January. Our garden is still, was still producing in December. So the gardening club is pretty hip and happening, allowing kids to attend that. And I would say, so, you know, Dawn and Sharon and Alyssa did a good job of giving you kind of the heads up what we're doing socially, emotionally to support social emotional wellbeing. But it's not just about the kids. So I'm going to say that we try every Friday to do something, you know? Blue and white day, some sort of spirit day. And January 28th, we had nothing planned and I didn't want to go blue and white day again. And so it turns out that the last Friday of January is National Have Fun at Work Day. So we are going to celebrate that. At least in the middle school, we're encouraging the kids to dress up like their future job. We're encouraging the adults to dress casually. And it's also Lego day. So we're kind of incorporating some Lego into having fun. But, you know, I put it out to staffs and think about games you can play that relate to your content, but also games that you can play with kids. You know, if you want me to come, within five minutes, I had somebody say, oh, we're playing bingo in ASL. All you have to know is, you know, the letters for bingo. You want to come play? Yes, I do. So people are being encouraged to do some fun stuff. And we're going to have fun at work with the kids. We're going to have fun with our colleagues and our sunshine club is helping with some of the fun for the adults. But I cannot tell you what it is because it's a surprise. But next Friday, National Fun at Work Day. Bring it to your.
I wanted to first just recognize a student who was our Word of the Month, Will Prober. Mrs. Minette, who was our new band teacher, said this about Will. Will is one of the kindest students who has walked through my classroom door. He's always had a smile on his face, nose kind of right up the room and is always willing to go above and beyond. He is a leader of the music department, always lending a helping hand and is a key player in the jazz band. Will will be involved in the drama club, running the soundboard for the past two years and plans to continue spreading joy through, through music once he graduates from June. I couldn't stress this enough and the reason I pointed this out was because I saw Will on my way to walking here and I said, Will, do you go home? And he goes, sometimes. I said, and he's just, he's a kid and walks in and will put a smile on his face at every single event. Whether he has a guitar in his hand or, or some other instrument, he's a phenomenal student. The other thing that was, that you guys didn't see was the CTE department approached me in regards to a elective sphere. So anyone that offers an elective in the high school has the opportunity to broadcast what they do within the classroom. And it's as simple as putting a table out front of their door with a trifold, possibly a del board, and just showing the students as they walk through the hallways, what we have available here. I was like, yes, great idea. Let's do it and let's do it before we start to select classes. So next Tuesday, the 25th is going to be our elective sphere. I know it's a quick turnaround, but I think we just, it's amazing how, how many opportunities we give our students at high school. And I think that our students need to know all the opportunities that are out there. A couple of examples is next, next year, we're looking to have a mentoring seminar. We're looking to have a ninth grade seminar and self-improvement class and stress management class. Both the self-improvement class and the stress management class, depending you run through the health department and for college credit. So there's a lot of, a lot of new things coming around and I think that we want to give our students the opportunity to see everything before they dive into that selection. Coming down the road with that is our guide to programming will be interactive. So they'll be able to look at it online through the website and watch videos about what goes on within that classroom. That's give me a little bit of time. I gave them the next month.
Okay, public correspondence and comments. We have one piece of correspondence that was shared with board members and the administration is working to respond to. We have some folks who would like to speak. Just want to go over the rules as I've been requested to do so by my fellow board members for public input. Persons wishing to speak should indicate so on a public input form found at the sign and table at the door. Each person may comment to the board once. The first public input session is reserved for those who've signed up to speak regarding items on the agenda. The second public input is for both agenda and non-agenda items. At the public input portion of the meeting, the board president will ask persons wishing to speak to move to the podium and introduce themselves and any organization they may be representing. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Speakers are encouraged to submit in writing any additional comments they'd like to make. Comments about any employees, students, or community member should not be discussed in public. That could be negative or positive. And you can request a meeting with our administration if you'd like. The board does not generally respond immediately to issues raised, but board members may ask clarifying questions. After the board has asked questions, if there are any, the speakers then, he or she will leave the podium. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments and writing as well. The board will direct the administration to research the concerns presented. And generally, there's no discussion between the speaker and the board. The board will not deliberate or take action regarding requests presented at this meeting. If public follow-up is required, it will be presented in a subsequent meeting. We ask for visitors to respect all speakers during the public session and to avoid engaging in other conversations while the board conducts its business. Thank you. Tiffany Russo here?
Hello, my name is Tiffany Russo. I've been here a few times. I'm probably going to reiterate the things that I've already said. I'm a mom of four, two of which attend Cuxory Athens. I'm going to start by thanking Mr. Squire for the well-expected, timely response to my email in regards to the mental abuse that children are enduring at this school. Amazingly, there's a sense of urgency to emails to email us daily about COVID cases among children with a survivability rate of 99.8 or 8.15. Yet, when I email you in regards to mental health in which children are suffering at an astronomically higher rate, suicide, depression, anxiety, you put this on the back burner until you knew that I'd be here for accountability, which would be held tonight. You're right, I didn't answer my phone today. Why? Because I kept my child home due to a barking call, which she gets every year with the cold weather. But due to your money-making protocols, should I say this? She would then have to quarantine and test in order to come back to receive an education. My children will not stick another Q-tip up their nose to prove that they deserve just that. I will do the same that parents have been doing since SARS, H1N1, swine flu, bird flu, which is to keep your children home until they're better. Which leads me to my next fact. Back in 2009, during the H1N1 pandemic, masks were not required per CDC. The same statistics of SARS-CoV-2 are the same, 2009. Cloth masks do not work. Surgical masks are intended for spit and blood spray. During surgery, read the box. And even the N95, it says on the box that they're 95% effective against the size of 0.3 microns or higher, higher. Yet the size of the SARS-CoV-2 aerosols are 0.125. This is all being brought out on CDC, so I don't understand why we're not adhering to those guidelines. These children are going to the bathroom with masks on, flushing a toilet. These aerosols are spraying onto these masks and they're putting it over their faces and breathing it in all day. Find my spot, sorry. If you would teach actual science and math, this would make sense. Unfortunately, you are more concerned over the year 2030 agenda of indoctrination. EUAs are subject to informed consent. There are not any studies available to show a reduction of viral transmission among children who are masked versus unmasked. In fact, the study in which the CDC bases its findings are entirely flawed. They cited the schools in Arizona where the schools, half of the They cited the schools in Arizona where the schools, half of the schools weren't even open at that time. So of course, if you're gonna cite schools that are open and not open, you're going to have a higher rate of transmission. Please, if I'm the only speaker, really, can I just finish what I have to say? Thank you. As far as the schools running science experiments during our taxpaying hours, it is disgraceful. After injection of this therapeutic, because I refuse to call it a vaccine, you carry a viral load. Yet, you promote our school as a medical facility, then send our freshly vaccinated individuals back into the classroom to begin the next barrier. By promoting this, it says to me that you will, and I emphasize will, be held accountable for myocarditis, which is a proven side effect of this vaccine with a death rate of 50% among the diagnosed within five years. Let's talk about natural immunity now for your protocol. Since just today, the CDC has finally admitted what the conspiracy theorists have been saying all along, natural immunity has better protection than the vaccination for the Delta variant. So since you are following the science, when will natural immunity play a role in your quarantine guidelines? I'm not threatening you. I am promising you that now, since we have pretty much herd immunity, because every day I get 20 different kids that are coming down with COVID, my children, as well as many other children, will be showing up unmasked, sitting at their taxpaying seats to receive their education. And you will be met with a lawyer after lawyer should you demean, shame, segregate, or anything else through that throughout, to them as they come in and do so. Throughout this pandemic, you have changed many policies. One policy that will be changed is that our board policy, you should be addressing people as they talk to you. We have plenty of parents that would gladly take your seats, gladly, and are passionate about our children and their health and the concerns of the parents. And we'll talk back to the parents when they have concerns, not sit there like drones.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing.
You could submit some things in writing to us as well.
Everybody on here talks about the efficacy of masks. Today's the first meeting that I haven't seen it. But every other meeting, every time you guys talk, you do this and start talking. I'm pretty sure that the aerosols spread a lot faster without the mask on than they do when you're talking, than they do when you're sitting here. You're talking about configuring schools. You are not going to have enough children to fill one school, let alone two. If you guys do not stand up for our children, because they will be cold, they will be homeschooled. And somebody wanted me to mention the fact that when you do do the busing with the pre-K, that they will be in the same bus as the older kids. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we're following the guidelines that are given to us. We don't make up...
That's what everybody says. We're following CDC, we're following the DOH, we're following this. Nobody is taking up for our kids. There are plenty of states that are doing it. They are winning. You guys can do it. You guys can write to the schools or the DOH. You guys can write. The leader, the lead lady of the Department of Health literally went out in line about the fact of all the rates of the kids that were in the hospital. She said it was just to promote the vaccine.
Okay, I just explained that we're just following...
And I'm just explaining that you need to pick up for our children.
All right, we have superintendent recommendations, policies. Is this something to separate out or just plug on? The second, first, second, reading? Yeah. So the motion of consent for program matters, personnel matters, C1, 2, 3, 4. And there's an addendum 2 that was included. The last page maybe? We'll start with C1. All but C1. 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Oh, any discussion? On favor? I oppose. And the C1 are our retirements that we know of so far. Motion to approve for C1, Mr. Hurwitz and Mr. Kent at this time. Sorry. Any discussion? So we want to thank both Mr. Hurwitz and Mr. Kent for their years of service. And I know you'll speak for more of a better clear... Any other discussion? On favor? Business matters. Motion consent for D1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and the addendum. The motion?
Seven.
Second? Anyone? Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? The second public input? Around the table?
Okay. I just, you already know that your staff is really caring and pretty, pretty, pretty in touch with everyone. I just want to say I've been doing my backpack program through transmission for, you know, 10 or 11 years. And just recently, even there was, you know, there was a circumstance and they brought to my attention a family that was a need. And just talking to, you know, different staff, like all the people that were involved and helping, I mean, even delivering to their house because the mother couldn't drive and some of that. And I just, I know you guys are really proud, but we really do have an awesome caring staff. And I think that's really cool.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank our presenters that we had tonight. The social emotional pieces that are happening. We've talked about a lot of this for a long time. And I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with some of the different student mentoring and some of those different programs. And I look forward to seeing where that goes in the near future. And the young ladies that came to present from the Interact Club. You know, it takes a lot to stand up in front of the roomful people and a board and present. I think they did a great job.
So I want to thank our presenters. It was great to hear from the Interact Club because I was a member back in high school to hear what they've done to grow that program and continue to just, not just do the same things over and over, but to really grow it and do something special is really great to hear. Also, she's left now, but Mrs. Essex. Big shout out to her and glad she presented, but she really set me straight and on my path, because I had no idea what I was gonna do. But she hooked me up with her beloved Aubrey River Rats when I was in high school. And I worked for them for a bit. So shout out to Mrs. Essex. She's great and I'm glad she's still doing things here now with middle school students.
Well, again, thank you for, I was very thankful to the social emotional learning initiatives that we have going on because it's very important. I was impressed by the kids talking about their club. And I'm really proud of all the things that are happening in your schools. So it speaks to your leadership and I appreciate that. And all of the people that are involved in all of the elements of keeping our kids in school and keeping our kids safe, because there's so many unsung heroes. And we need to recognize that this has been a hardship for everybody. And I personally appreciate the fact that we've been open and our kids are learning. I also know in our community that we have, that it's just a really tricky time. It's a very stressful time. There's all this information and it's really hard to figure out what's the right thing to do. And I hope that the community knows that we, or at least some of us, I mean, I guess I can speak for myself, like I, I hear you and I support you and I just don't know how to help eliminate the stress level that is happening all over. And we just want you to know that we do listen, that we do hear you. And we appreciate you coming and bringing things to our attention.
So I did want to thank the presenters tonight as well and all of the staff who extends the day to this time and presents to us and brings us this information.
I just want to say I'm excited to hear some of the things that we have that we're looking at doing. An interactive guide for the kids is really exciting. I kind of want to play with it when it's done. No pressure, no, not next week. But just, I think that it's really gonna, you know, showcase to some of the kids that they don't need two, three study halls. They can fill them with some really awesome classes that we have for them here. And I think they'll get excited about them by seeing them just not on the paper.
I want to thank those girls from the Interact Club. Interact does such an amazing job in our community. It's a program near and dear to my heart. It's the juniors of Rotary. So, you know, they do good in our community. And they spoke so well tonight. And I don't know if they get the recognition that they really, that whole club truly deserves. But thank them for it.
Yeah, I appreciate the presenters as well, what everybody else said. Just want to note that we were on national television for a few moments on Saturday. So I want to thank Mr. Squire, John Pascuzzi, and Abby Green, and Maggie Squire for representing us nationally and how we're trying to manage COVID. And certainly understand that the board sees that as one of thousands of efforts that everybody's doing, parents, families, staff, all of us, all of you. And we appreciate, we can't all be on national TV, but we do appreciate everything that everybody's doing to try to get through this. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of feelings about the stress. We're, I think, as of like, what, March 17th? We're going into the third year of this. And we all thought, I remember when it first happened, it's maybe four weeks, maybe we'd be done. And this is gonna be the third year. So it's a tough time and hopefully we'll get through it together. Okay, we just need approval of the CSC meetings. We already talked about this, Katie. And we had no questions for you. So I just need a motion of consent to approve the CSC meetings. No moves.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Next meetings are on... I think one is typically third, is that correct? Presentation meeting and then the regular board meeting is typically the third. And then it will be... Just need a motion to adjourn? Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. So carry. Good night, good night, everybody.